...come with Thanksgiving, that we give thanks for the freedom that we have to even have this kind of a meeting. And Lord, let your hand of blessing and protection be upon all of those who are in service of our country around the world to enable us to have these kind of meetings. So we ask for your hand to be upon all of those here in authority tonight, that they will have wisdom, understanding, and patience, and Lord, that your presence will just dwell in the hearts of all of those here tonight. And we ask these things in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Councilman Slackta, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
You'll be my honor mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Yep.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Slackta.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Simons.
Here.
Councilman Longcard.
Here. Okay, now we're going to take a public comment on agenda items. We do have one of particular interest, I think, a lot of you, which has got to do with the moratorium on the density reduction groundwater resource area. If you would like to hold your comments until that time, it may be helpful to council to be able to hear your comments just before we go into deliberations. So just remember that, and I don't think that that will be coming up too long for now. So anyway, anything on the agenda item that you would like to talk about, please come forward. Seeing none? Okay, let's go ahead and move right along. Let's see, Proclamations and Presentations. Let's see, Brenda Brooks, would you please come forward?
Yay, Brenda Brooks. Getting one for being a really cool person.
Forward, forward. Not up here.
All right.
Are you getting one for being a really cool person?
I'd like to introduce Brenda Brooks. She's a very good friend of mine. I've known her for quite some time now, right? Right, yes. She works with the Crew Trust. She's the executive director, is that not right?
That's correct.
That's correct, of the Crew Trust, the Corkscrew Regional Ecosystem and Watershed. And she does an absolutely fantastic job with a crew of two people, well, actually four, including this one right here. She represents three people. She does an absolutely fantastic job with taking care of the lands out east of Benita Springs and the gigantic watershed, beautiful watershed that is the Crew Trust. And so, thank you very much. And we have something very special going on. Crew has been around for 25 years now?
It's excellent.
It will be 25 years, 2014.
We'll say today, anyway. But anyway, so we have a proclamation, and we have all kinds of fun things that after I get done, well, you can tell us what's going to happen to celebrate that. And so, whereas the Crew Land and Water Trust is a private, nonprofit conservation organization dedicated to the preservation and stewardship of the water resources and natural communities in and around the Corkscrew Regional Ecosystem and Watershed, and whereas the Crew Trust has been coordinating land acquisitions, land management, and public use of its 60,000-acre watershed in partnership with South Florida Water Management, the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission for 25 years, and whereas Crew is the largest intact watershed in southwest Florida, straddling Lee and Collier Counties, and whereas Crew's majestic 5,000-acre sawgrass marsh is the headwaters for the entire watershed, which includes the National Audubon Society's famous Corkscrew Swamp Sanctuary located south of the marsh, and whereas this unique watershed provides southwest Florida agents aquifer recharge for our drinking water, natural flood protection, water purification, wildlife habitat, and beautiful space for public recreation, and whereas the Crew Land and Water Trust provides guided walks for the public, environmental education projects for all ages, special events for members, teachers, workshops, and presentation for the community. Now therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., mayor of the city of Benita Springs, on behalf of this council, do proclaim January 5th through 11th, 2014, the Crew Trust Week, and encourage all southwest Floridians to support the Crew Trust in its mission to show the utmost gratitude and respect on their 25th anniversary. It has been my pleasure to be a member and friend of Crew for such a long time. We have two people from the city of Benita Springs, Martha Stones and myself. I have been honored to be the chairman of the Crew Trust for the last year, and it has been my pleasure to serve on there. It's been a love of mine for a long time. It's where my wife and I got married, engaged, the whole works. So you can see, I'm attached to that area out there. Thank you, and still married, bam!
That was a hundred.
So proud of that. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Everybody give her a hand, please.
I didn't know you were going to be here. Our longest-standing volunteer, David Cooper, is here. It's wonderful to see you. I'd like to thank all of you on behalf of the Crew Land and Water Trust. Many of you in this room already know what Crew is. Many of you have utilized Crew. We do have the official Crew Trust Week coming up in January to celebrate our 25th anniversary, but know that throughout the entire 2014, we have an incredible lineup of programs and events, and I would just invite you to go to our website. Our biggest one, co-sponsored by the city of Benita Springs, is March 1st. It's our biggest fundraiser, and it's the Crew Concert and Silent Eco Auction right here at Riverside Park. So on behalf of the Crew Trust, thank you very much for this acknowledgement, and everybody needs to come to Crew. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Oh, wait, photo op.
Thank you, Brenda.
I have to tell you, I mean, I know a lot of you are in here because you really care about that area out there. There's no better way than to show that you care about that area than to become a friend of Crew and to be active and to show your support in that way. So, there you go. There's my pitch. Did I do my job?
Good job.
Okay, next. Okay, we have a presentation for the principals of Benita Springs Elementary School, Benita Springs Middle School, and Spring Creek Elementary School in recognition of their efforts in receiving the 2013 Five Star School Award.
Yay!
I'd like to have to bring it again. Dr. Vani Bryant, Ms. Kimberly Zabato, and George Clover. Is George, are you here?
He's after.
Come on up. Linda Mitchell, and of course, Mr. David Short. Hi, how you doing?
Great to see you.
I have to tell you, this is the first time I've ever seen him not at the school, David. He's always there.
Good to see you.
Did you graduate yet there? I did. I graduated. I remember you there. He was probably there when I was in elementary school there. Everybody gets one of these. Okay, and here we go. Whereas the school district of Lee County recently announced that 25 schools have been named recipients of the 2013 Five Star School Award, and I have to talk, Dr. McIntosh, would you please come around here as our liaison?
My honor.
Education, please come around here. Go, and I can, like, come on over here, and I'll, you can hand out the plaques.
The principal's office wasn't shaken.
We rehearse this a lot. Anyway, whereas this award is presented each year to deserving schools by Florida Commissioner of Education's Community Involvement Council, and whereas the award recognizes schools that have demonstrated exemplary community involvement, and whereas to qualify this award, a school must achieve 100% of the required criteria and maintain a portfolio that documents the achievement of the criterion in five areas: community, business partnership, family involvement, volunteers, student, community service, and the school advisory council. And whereas the city of Benita Springs does hereby wish to recognize the 2013 Five Star Schools, Benita Springs Elementary, Benita Springs Middle, and Benita, Spring Creek Elementary Schools, and whereas Benita Springs Charter School was the recipient of the 2011 Five Star School Award, and whereas Estero High School is a consistent finalist in the ranking for the Five Star School Award, now therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., mayor of the city of Benita Springs, do hereby proclaim and acknowledge all the principals in our community for their leadership, their commitment to education for our children, and their dedication to the future of our entire community. Thank you so much for everything you do. Education in Benita is alive and well. Thank you so much.
Most of you, because the school system doesn't come under the city purview, most of you have never seen these people, but thanks, thanks to the dedication of the folks who are standing here beside us, our future is secure. And I'm going to do, very quickly go through these because I want you to know the work that goes in. Most of them are going back to school tonight to be with students or the parents. That's their commitment. But let's start with Linda Mitchell in the middle school. She has turned the middle school into a center for the arts. It's one of the few places in the state that has a music arts program for us, so thank you very much, Ms. Mitchell. David Short, the thing that's most impressive to me about David Short, he meets every child every morning as they get off the bus, so they'll know he's there for them. We have Dr. Bryant, Dr. Vani Bryant, Spring Creek Elementary, she's been a consistent partner with the city in terms of making sure that the education of these children is civically minded and that we assure that we have good leaders coming through this system to our school. And with her right now, right along with is the assistant principal, and she carries the gun, so that's why we, yeah. We come down to Charter School, we're very proud of the Charter School here in Benita Springs. They've established themselves almost overnight as a vital part of this community. And none of this could happen without George Clover. George has turned a high school into a living community for learning. The Cambridge Program, which is a superior program given to very, very few schools, is at our Estero High School. So thank you to them from all of us because that's our future in their hands. Thank you very much, y'all.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the support we get from the mayor, from the city council, and all the support from the people out there who also support our schools. We have a lot of business partners who go unnamed out there and who help us in so many ways, and we have so many people here in the city government who come to the schools and help us so much. So let's have a nice hand for all the big help we get here.
We do want to mention the officers in the background that come and have our kids do writing and do rewards and awards for them, and how much we appreciate all you folks do too, and for protecting us every day. Thank you.
On behalf of Benita Springs Charter School, thank you so much for all the efforts that you've helped us with to help develop our school this year. We are a new administration team at Benita Springs Charter School, but we are proud to be a part of the Benita Springs community, so thank you for all that you do to help us.
I can just say that Estero High School has come a long way, and most of that is from what we're getting from our feeder schools, and I'm going to be honest, we used to look north for our feeder schools, but I can tell you, the strength of Estero High School is now coming from the south, which is Benita. So thank you very much.
I said everybody spoke, so I have to say something. I received a letter last week from Governor Scott and Benita Springs Middle, finished in the top 3% in the area of reading. We were 107 out of 3,057 schools in the state, and we finished 212 in the area of mathematics in the top 4%. So you have a lot to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, all of you. Don't let anybody tell you that Benita Springs doesn't have good schools, okay?
We have two more. Hey, thanks.
Okay, right now, I would like to, we need to have some of our Lee County Sheriff's Officers come up here, and Robert Gillette, and let's see, also, is Ray here?
No.
Oh, okay. Robert Gillette, come on up forward, and members of the Fire Control and Rescue District, can you come on forward? We have a presentation to make.
Steven, you want Bob up there now? You want Bob up there?
Bob, come on up.
He was kind of hanging back.
That's why.
Had a boy. Be brave.
I know, you don't like doing this.
This is in appreciation for all the work that these gentlemen and these organizations have done on this, on our Veterans Day service and the traveling tribute. And this is for Lee County Sheriff's Office, in appreciation of your dedication to the Veterans Day service and American Veteran Traveling Tribute, the efforts of your agency have assisted the city of Benita Springs to remember and honor the sacrifices of our veterans. Thank you so much. And also, this is for the Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District, thank you very much for everything that you've done with this. And I have to tell you, this gentleman here has done so much for this community, there is no other community who does what we do there because of you, because of these gentlemen, because of our Veterans Affairs Committee, so far as our Veterans Day celebrations. Unbelievable. No other city does this like this because of people like you, sir. Mr. Gillette, thank you so much for your dedication. We are honored to have you here. Thank you. Follow up. Follow up.
Thank you. Hey, thanks a lot, Perez.
Sure.
Joe. Awesome.
Chief. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, chief.
And, okay, and you know what? Once a year, we go down to the beach and have a great old time and picking up garbage and all kinds of stuff. And Doc's Beach House, they go above and beyond. They seem to feed thousands of people, and at least hundreds of them pick up garbage. But, nothing? Nothing? Okay, never mind. All right, whatever. But I got to tell you, could Lou, Lou and your lovely wife, could you come up here? Laura, come on up, please. Doc's Beach House supplies the food for all of our people who come out there and work so hard, and they do it without batting an eye. It's unbelievable, and I am so much in debt for what you do to it. It really makes it.
Appreciate it.
And I have a certificate of appreciation of what the principals left.
You read good.
Yeah. An appreciation of Doc's Beach House and your dedication to the annual coastal cleanup, and the efforts of your agency have assisted the city of Benita Springs in keeping our beautiful beaches pristine. We are so proud of the beaches down there. We're so proud of the establishment that you have down there and your commitment to the community. It's such a great, fun place to be. I got to tell you, it's like way too much fun for me, but that's, you don't need to know about that. Never mind about that. But anyway, thank you so much for what you do. It's unbelievable, the dedication and what you do for us. Thank you so much. Everybody, please give them a great round of applause. I want, Councilman Slackta, he represents that area, and I'd love you to come in here and say something, please.
Lou, we've been together for a long time, and I just want you to know that when we had the cleanup, I didn't realize how much money was donated by Doc's. It was, came to, just the breakfast was $2,600. Lou, thanks for everything that you do in support of our city and helping out with this cleanup. God bless you.
And mayor, I want to thank them for contributing to their house on Somerset Lane for getting the road paved.
Oh, yes, so much.
Oh, and for all of you who participate next year, remember to tip your waitresses, please.
That's right.
Please, just because the food's free doesn't mean the people work for free, okay? All right, had to get that in there. All right.
Consent agenda.
Okay, now we're to the consent agenda. We have A, B, and C, and D. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Do you have anything you'd like to pull from there, or are we all good?
I like to move it.
I have a motion to approve. There's a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilman Longcard.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, we are to first reading of the public hearing of the following ordinances, and there will be public comment allowed on these, yeah, on these ordinances.
Yes, because they're all land development code.
They're all land development code. All right, carry on.
Okay, I'm going to do the reading of the first title block. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida pertaining to the Density Reduction Groundwater Resource Area designated on the city of Benita Springs Future Land Use Map, establishing a moratorium on the processing of any comprehensive plan amendments within the Density Reduction Groundwater Resource Future Land Use category located in the eastern portion of the city of Benita Springs, east of I-75 and north of Benita Beach Road, providing for legislative findings. Purpose: Establishing a specific plan for the Density Reduction Groundwater Resource Area that balances the interests of development, conservation, and resource protection, declaring a temporary moratorium, providing for severability and effective date. This is the first public reading. The second public reading will be held on December 18th, 2013, in these chambers beginning at 9:00 a.m. Most of the ordinance, or the background of the ordinance, because it is on the second page of the green sheet, this is moratoriums, our land use ordinances, that's why you have public hearings as opposed to normal first readings of ordinances, which you don't have that. So it is a two-public hearing process and two times where people can speak. It also goes to the local planning agency, who will have the opportunity to review it on December 12th. A few of you had questions as to why did this not get on the agenda earlier, and I just want to point out that because it has to be advertised as a land use ordinance, I wasn't able to get the title block provided to the city clerk for her to have it advertised so that everything would be handled. We can make changes to the document tonight. There are, I believe, three. I talked with Councilmember Simons, who I believe has a change that she desires. I also want to point out that a citizen pointed out to me that we did not have, and this was an accident in drafting, we should have language in here that allows the city council by resolution to be able to terminate prior to the one year if necessary. I will add that language if so directed by council in the next draft of it. And then the third thing is a request, and you see a letter dated November 26, along with a letter that you should have all received on November 25. It was to the mayor, but it does show that you were copied, so I'm presuming you were all copied on it. But if you weren't copied on it, you would have received the copy on November 26, saying I would attach it, and that was the discussion as to a pilot program. I'm prepared to provide any legal analysis if you have questions on that. Otherwise, it's up to you.
Okay, very good. Counsel, why don't we just go ahead and go to public comment at this time? Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward.
And if I can just say, if we could get papers filled out by people so we can give it to the clerks so we can get spellings correct.
Look who's prepared there. Look at that.
Beverly Greenstein, and I'm a resident of Worthington Country Club. Community development is entrusted with the job of assuring that all building is done in such a way that it is compliant with the building codes that have been established, and that such development will be an asset to existing and surrounding communities. In the case of the DRGR, the parameters for development have not yet been established. The moratorium voted in on November 6th, 2013, and the task force established following that meeting have not had time to coordinate land use with adequate water supplies, flood mitigation, and preservation. Please do not approve spot development. Allow the one-year moratorium to stand as written and the task force to complete the job that they have been entrusted to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Yes, thanks, Meg.
Hi, I'm Meg Jacobson. I live in east Benita Springs, and I'm here to also say, please do not give an exception to something that hasn't even started. I was so shocked when I heard about it, I thought, how in the world could those people, and you are those people, and staff, you're all those people, how could you even consider an exception when we haven't even started the moratorium? But then I thought, well, that's only fair. You should listen to all of us, not just some of us. And so I understand why you're hearing it, but I urge you, please, don't give an exception to the biggest developer in the whole DRGR. What good could possibly come of them leading the effort? You've got a group now that all of you selected, so it's your people, if you will, to think about what should be done. Certainly, you could direct the task force to include conversation with the mining company. They're an important part of our community, but to let them lead the effort, which is what, in my opinion, a pilot is. It's an exception, and it's letting them have the leadership. So I urge you not to allow that. There's no special rights, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't even play one on TV, but I do think that there's nothing in the documents that they've provided that shows they have any exceptional rights. They're in the DRGR just like everybody else, and they need to be subject to the same rules everybody else has. To get the exception now isn't really productive to the whole task. So I urge you, please, don't do a switcheroo, as somebody said in one of the editorials in the paper, and allow the task force to do its job, followed by any submission that the mine people want. And I also ask that you please televise the task force hearing. It would be really convenient to be able to watch it rather than having all of us pile on down to listen to what they have to say. And if televising is good enough for city council, it should be good enough for this particular task force that has such an important task. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Good evening. Donna Stone. I am on the External Affairs Committee at Worthington Country Club. I am requesting that you honor the November 6th moratorium vote on the DRGR area without amending it to allow any development from the mining company. There was overwhelming citizen support for the moratorium. It is extremely important to allow the water task force, with input from water experts and citizens, the one year you voted on last month, to create and establish much-needed water protection and flooding preservation safeguards before any development is considered. Mr. Eric Livingston, the Watershed Management Services from Crawfordville, Florida, spoke before the vote and carefully explained the error and catastrophic results that any development in the DRGR area would cause until the proper water protection guidelines were established. Mr. Livingston has strongly recommended that a citywide water protection guideline be developed similar to the one that he is designing for Tampa. He pointed out several generalities and statements in the Baracko Report that needed clarification or correction. We as citizens are asking you to protect our safety, our real estate values, the tax impact from overdevelopment, and environmental concerns. The city council must put the concerns of its citizens before any developer's interest. Please do not allow the amendment to the moratorium from the mining company or any other developments for at least the one year agreed upon for the moratorium. Stop spot zoning. Stop working with the developers and start working with the tax-paying citizens that will have to live with the water problems from ill-designed developments. Stop causing our taxes to go up with the needed infrastructure improvement in addition to schools, fire stations, additional police, and road expansions caused by the overdevelopment. Stop endangering our future water needs, our beaches, and our quality of life from flooding and our aquifer. Please stop and get the water right first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I'm Marion Ziegler. Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. I'm Marion Ziegler from San Remo. Meg and I are on the External Affairs Committee together. Well, what more can I say than what my fellow citizens who spoke before me have already said? But I do ask you, I would beg you to consider to keep the moratorium intact without any exceptions to it. It doesn't make sense to take a large portion of that, exempt, call it a pilot program, a test program, whatever you want. It's an exemption or an exception. The moratorium should be left intact, and there should be no exception for that. I'm not against development. I worked for DeWosda, I'm sure you're all familiar with that name. I know development is here. I know development will continue no matter what, but it has to be done very carefully to preserve what we have left. There would be a very simple solution, I always say this tongue-in-cheek for the whole program, take out I-75 and restore the water flow, but that's obviously not feasible. So we have to do whatever we can.
I'm writing that down, anyway, so.
We have to do whatever we can to preserve what we have left. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Ed Fitzgerald. I'm 90, oh, 92. That's not true.
Holy moly.
I've been living in Benita Springs since 1992.
You're selling yourself short, everybody.
Okay, I'm close, though. I'm addressing the moratorium and the restoration rights of that property. I oppose any exemption from the moratorium for the mine property. There is no overriding There is no overriding justification or reason to violate the goals of the moratorium. In fact, there are more reasons to deny this application. In fact, one of them is the condition of the property right now. Some of the pits out there in this land mining operation are 90 feet deep. The property right now is unsuitable for any other use, and the operation, the mining operation, is continuing, though, under the ownership of a bank. The Bonita Springs residents have a legal right to full restoration of that property that would be started when the mining operation is ended. The mining operation will not be ended by the bank until they get this variation. Their intention is to sell this property and to sell it for development. They want to sell it in the condition that it is right now, not in the condition that they're required to put it into. When the banking, the mining operation ceases, the land should be restored to its pristine condition as was agreed upon when they got the permission to operate a mine. This operation, this application, I believe diminishes the rights of the people of Bonita Springs to guaranteed restoration of the land. You know, are we protecting the rights of this bank? Well, banking in this country, as well as abroad, is a private versus a government enterprise. They accept risk and take profits. There are no guarantors to profit and no forgiveness in bad business deals. The bank properly exercises its rights to limited foreclosure and now is in possession of land in Bonita Springs, land which is encumbered with land restrictions to which the bank was fully aware at the time of lending. It is not the responsibility of Bonita Springs, City of Bonita Springs, to step in and to increase those, that asset, and make it more profitable for the bank to succeed. It is the right of the citizens of Bonita Springs to demand that this land now in damaged and destroyed condition be restored to its prior use that it was specified years ago. The intention of this zoning is not for the betterment of the citizens of Bonita Springs. It's to restore a profit situation for the bank. The bank and the mine is ready to be closed, and if it's ready to be closed, it should be restored to its condition that is stipulated in the franchise. Granting a variation or a zoning change, that does nothing for Bonita Springs other than assures that the bank can sell it to a developer. I don't even care if they sell it to a developer, but they should have it in the restored condition that it is, we were guaranteed to have it before they're allowed to do that. That's my contention. They are trying to circumvent and get away from their obligation to restore this property. If this property were closed tomorrow, it would be restored. This corporation had the mine is gone. They failed to operate properly, and they failed to fund the ability to restore this property at their termination date. They knew they were going out of business. They did not provide the funds to restore this property. They did not provide the funds. And they were able to exercise their protection under the corporate umbrella by closing. They eliminated their responsibility, and the bank assumed it when they took over the property.
Thank you very much, Ed. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Dave Gallagher from Cedar Creek. I'll keep this short. In the details attached to the green sheet concerning the establishment of a moratorium on the smittle and processing of a comprehensive plan applications, I was surprised to find a letter from the mine requesting exemption from the moratorium. The mine argues that due to the history of this project and the mine's unique characteristics, that an exception is warranted. If approved, it would grant the mine the right to develop comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, future land use map amendments, and the rezoning needed to develop 1,300 acres. This is exactly opposite of the position taken by the residents of Bonita Springs when they supported the creation of a one-year moratorium and a task force to get the water right. I urge the council to reject the proposed exception to the moratorium. It's very important to look at the entire DRGR rather than a piecemeal approach proposed by the mine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Gallagher of Cedar Creek in Bonita Springs. During the last city council meeting, it was clear that almost everyone wants to move toward a permanent solution for the DRGR issue. Some want to build, and some want to get the water right first. The council vote was for a one-year moratorium and a task force to really dive into the water issues and determine what is best for the city, the residents, and the environment. So now I have to ask, why are we considering amending the moratorium ordinance to allow the Bonita Grande Mine an exception for a pilot program? Couldn't the city have just said, no, not now? Approving an exemption would allow the mine to have undue influence on the task force. Furthermore, the mine's plan to hire a cop and Livingston would put the water experts under their control. The mine has its own objectives, and those are for residential development within the DRGR or for the area to be exempted from the DRGR as soon as possible. Talk about letting the fox watch the hen house. Furthermore, the Chamber and Economic Development Council have said piecemeal development isn't the way to go. Rather, the city needs a plan for the whole DRGR. Approving the mine's request would clearly be an indication that the council is working against itself. The city council majority spoke, and the way forward is via the moratorium as written and all the people of the city, not just city council, should get on the same track. Also approving the mine's request invites a flurry of exemption requests, especially during the period between now and the date the moratorium takes effect. In conclusion, do not allow any changes to the moratorium as written. Do not give the Bonita Grande Mine or other interests an exception. Also, please vote for the unchanged moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I'm Deborah McLean. I'm the publisher of The Banana Peel, and I agree with the speakers before me that there is no difference between the new terminology pilot program and an exemption, and neither should be allowed. But I'd like to dig a little bit deeper into the written words provided by our council here, city council. I have a problem with the worst word, the use of the word balance three times in the ordinance. In Section 2, Purpose, it says, "The purpose of the moratorium is to provide a reasonable amount of time to develop and implement a plan that balances the interest of development, conservation, and resource protections interest for the land." I found that that's interest for development is completely out of line and should be deleted. Balances should be changed to considers here and in two other places. Balance is also found in Section 4C of the ordinance in the green sheet's requested motion area. Balance implies that after moratorium expires, the task force has completed its findings, all interests will get an equal piece of the pie. This is something that I think the city should not promise or imply. It's simply not possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. How are you all? I'm Mark Generalis. I've been here before, and I'm going to just take a couple quick minutes. And I'm going to apologize upfront and just let you know, I've sat in your shoes for eight years. I served as the county commissioner. We went through a comp plan. We put zoning ordinances in place. We had rooms full of folks who were upset about what we did one direction or another. So I know what you're all dealing with here. I have to admit, I sat in the room the last time I was here and was a bit stunned when I heard the term moratorium. I don't understand the need for it. You're the ones who vote. You either vote for or you vote no. What's the need for a moratorium? It's redundant from my perspective. It's illogical step forward for something that really isn't necessary. So I'd ask you to think about why you're going forward with it, and before you're done this evening, maybe explain to us why you need a moratorium to protect yourselves from each other. Ultimately, you're the ones who vote. There isn't anybody else. The other thing I would point out is, you have Bonita Beach Road. You have developments already on it. They contribute to the water that goes across it. Whether you move forward with development or not, the water issue is going to need to be dealt with. Do you take it out of funds that the city has, or do you have development step forward and help pick up the costs? It's an issue that I know I've dealt with many, many times, and quite frankly, as a citizen of Bonita, I would much prefer to see us have the ability to lay off those costs to a new developer than to ask citizens who are here to pick up those costs. Consider those things, if you will. Thanks, folks.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Patrick Colley. First, I want to express my appreciation to the city council for the...
Lean into that microphone a little bit more.
For the task force and for the moratorium. On the ordinance, I have a couple technical points. First off, in Section 2 under Purpose, I think it would be more consistent with the resolution establishing the task force if the purpose of it was to provide a reasonable amount of time for the task force to accomplish its objectives rather than what's stated here. The second comment I have on the proposed ordinance is in Section 4C, which talks about what the city council can do during the temporary moratorium period. And if you look at subsection C at the very end, I think there's some unnecessary and inflammatory language that ends so that the area can be adequately and properly developed balancing the interests of development, conservation, and resource protection. It's not necessary. It doesn't really belong there, I don't believe. The last comment on the proposed ordinance is to not allow any change that would allow the period for the moratorium to be changed other than by another ordinance. Turning to the letter from the lawyer for Bonita Grandi, for all the reasons stated before, I agree it's a very bad idea. It puts the cart before the horse. It's fundamentally unfair to the other landowners in the DRGR. And if you look at the broad scope of protection that the city has in a legislative act, and if you read the cases, one of the key principles is that similarly situated landowners are treated the same. And if you don't do that, I think at a minimum, it's fundamentally unfair. And although I'm not a Florida lawyer, I would sure wonder if it's more than that, if it could potentially open up the city to any legal challenges. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Linda Schwartz from Cedar Creek. I want to urge you to vote no on the Bonita Grande Mine's proposal to exempt them or any other party from the proposed moratorium on development in the DRGR. Their request is proof positive that we need a moratorium. The mine's suggested use of hydrology experts such as those supported by the conservancy is a ploy to co-op support for their pilot, which, if approved, surely would open the floodgate to other landowners and developers. It could give them grounds to claim unequal treatment. The city needs to develop a comprehensive plan only after the water task force has completed its work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Hello.
Good evening. My name is Mary Copeland. I'm a resident of Bonita Springs, and I reside in Hunter's Ridge community. So I'm out in the area that you're talking about. I have read and listened, and I'm here to say to you, please, give the task force the opportunity to do what you voted for them to do. And as far as development out there, the biggest concern we have, the major, is the water resource, and the second thing is the flooding. And I'm asking you, please, think about weakening the task force's ability to do their job. And I'm saying, think about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mary. Next speaker, please.
Fred Forbes, Hunter's Ridge, Bonita Springs resident. First of all, I agree with a couple of the public comments that if you're going to lift the ordinance or lift these ordinances for the moratorium, it should be done by an ordinance. It shouldn't be just a, here you go, and it's done. Secondly, let's go to the annexation agreement between the mine and the city. Having read that over, it says that should the study that was a hydrological study that was going on at the time that that annexation agreement was inked, something like February 2003, should its conclusion be that the intensity of use of the DRGR should be changed or that there was no real water recharge, groundwater recharge from the DRGR, that then the city could or might increase the intensity of use of the DRGR? The study, which was at that time funded by the city, did not conclude that there was any reason to increase the intensity of use, and it also said that there was significant recharge from the DRGR. And then the next study that the city funded, which was 2007, I believe, had the same conclusion. The only real study where work was done was an earlier study, and it's not even published. Not published. Copies I've seen of it says draft. So it's, we're all, all this thing about there's no recharge. That needs to be further explored at best. The other point that I would like to make is that I think that some of the words about balancing development, I think it would be better they not be in there. I personally am not against development. I made my living from it. Point to the other speaker that spoke, the standards that are in currently existence are not adequate to take care of the flooding issues, probably aquifer protection, and polluting the rivers and streams. So if you were to approve a pilot project, or we didn't have this moratorium, you could have developments going in with the standard design criteria. So I'm hoping that one of the things we're going to get out of this task force is by using experts to find out what local criteria you need to adopt so development can be done in different locations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Televise the things.
Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Tori Polonitz. I'm a resident of the DRGR. And the portion of this that I would like to address is the word balance. I think it's appropriate because we have to balance the private property owner's rights. And I humbly ask you all to remember that, that people have the right that own property out there, whether development is a large development or whether it's just individual development or individual properties. It is a balance. I trust you all to make the right decisions. I hope the task force will be effective. And I just have to say, I think the word balance is right on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good evening. For the record, Nicole Johnson, here on behalf of the Conservancy of Southwest Florida. And the Conservancy does support moving forward with the moratorium. It certainly gives the city and your soon-to-be-appointed Water Task Force time to complete its objectives. There's been some discussion about some wordsmithing of the actual moratorium ordinance language, and the Conservancy agrees with Mr. Colley on some of his suggestions. The one thing that I was going to point out as a possibility is in that Section 2 under purposes, to just make it nice and neat, to state that the purpose of the moratorium is to provide a reasonable amount of time for the water task force to accomplish its objectives. So, a suggestion there. But most importantly, we believe that the extent of the moratorium needs to apply to all properties and all comp plan amendments within the geographic extent of the Bonita DRGR. We have reviewed the request from Bonita Grande Properties to essentially allow them to move forward with their comp plan amendment, calling it a pilot program of sorts. We cannot support this, and we ask that you not allow this exemption. The whole point of having a water task force looking at the entirety of the Bonita DRGR is to preclude individual parcels from coming forward with separate and piecemeal plans to address water issues on their property, which may work for them individually but may not be the necessary part of a broader solution that we all want to find. may not be the necessary part of a broader solution that we all want to find. The city needs to study and find solutions to the Benita DRGR in its entirety, and this means that it should be done without any comp plan amendments that could be a catalyst creating predetermined conclusions that could happen as part of the mine site proposal, and that would not be appropriate. The mine site is an important piece of this DRGR puzzle, and therefore, it's essential that it be examined as part of this entire whole without a comp plan amendment in process. Whether it's done purposefully or inadvertently, my concern is that the task force meetings could be used as a continual venue to advocate and lobby for this comp plan amendment. So I think that that's something that really you need to consider as you're looking into this. We don't want a DRGR solution based around one certain mine site. It's a piece of the puzzle, but it needs to stay in that proper context. We hope that the mine's representatives will be part of this process. They need to be, but we can't do that with a comp plan amendment or a pilot program hanging over our heads. So please move the moratorium forward to second reading. No exemptions, no exemptions, no pilot programs in order to allow the Water Task Force to assess these issues appropriately and in their entirety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good evening. Christine Ross, here on behalf of the Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce and the Benita Springs Hysteroeconomic Development Council. So, we've been doing great work for the last two, two-and-a-half years, and I have to say that the word "moratorium" puts a chill down the spine of anyone interested in doing development work in Benita Springs. And I'm really sad that that word was used and that this action is currently being taken. I want to make a suggestion. Let's deny this moratorium. Let's take this Water Task Force that you are going to form today and have them work with the city staff to create a plan of what would you like to see out there? What would storm water mitigation look like? What would you want to have for sewer-ing and density? Instead of having a moratorium, give this task force the real action to create the plan. We don't need to have this be a two-step process. Spend a year figuring out what Benita wants to do out there with the expertise that you have at community development. I'm going to suggest this because property owners have rights. We need to have a large landowner on this task force like the mine. They are probably residents of Benita, too, for people to make the assumption that landowners are not also residents of our city. I think that's really not a good assumption to have. I live here, and I work here, and a lot of people do as well because of the quality of life of a very short commute and being on your boat 15 minutes after you leave your work. That's why Hertz is here. When I look through all of the objectives of the task force, they're valid, but many of the things that they're going to look at are in the three studies that you all have already paid for and that you had done over the course of the last 14 years. So let's let this task force work with those three studies done by experts with your very talented staff and create this opportunity. We don't need to have a moratorium. Let's have them figure out what you all want to do next. That's a more positive action. I think we've been striving to be positive for these last two-and-a-half years. That's why people are coming here and working with us, and why our phone is ringing. So I would implore you, take into account the 14 years and the $450,000 that you've already spent. That is expert research done on behalf of the city, not for developers. Utilize that expertise, utilize your staff, and spend some time thinking about the fact that the residents that are here wanting this not to happen, we're DRGR. Lands, Worthington, and Quail West, and all of those developments, we're DRGR. So if it's okay for them to be in those developments and buying homes and living there, why isn't it okay for us to figure out what to do on the northern side of that street? So please, deny this moratorium, appoint the task force, and let them work with your staff to create the plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
For the record, I'm Kathy McGrath. I'm speaking for myself as an over-45-year property owner and lived here year-round for 30 years. I was not in favor of the moratorium. I figure after 14 years and all the money spent, you know, that it should not have gone into, but majority rules, you voted for it. And if you choose to keep it, the one thing I'm here to say is, I do not think there should be any special exceptions for anybody there. I kind of look at it like the hole of the doughnut. I mean, you just don't do that. I think, I've been in favor of development out there. I don't think one unit and 10 acres is realistic, but I also don't agree with some of the density that's been suggested. I'm sort of a middle grounder. But you've appointed a task force, and as I said, I guess people are saying, do away with the moratorium. I don't know if that's possible. But if you choose to go ahead with the moratorium, no exceptions. I realize that with proper development and infrastructure, and I understand that Benita Springs Utilities had planned for this a long time ago before the economy went sour, and I believe they have spoken and said, yes, we can provide it. And it would not only with proper development, it would not degrade our water supply, it would enhance it. And for the flooding worries, I'm not an expert, but I don't see where any development there is going to cause flooding. What's going to cause flooding is if we have major storms and the sheet flow comes from the east from Lake Trafford. That is what's going to cause flooding. Now, you have a tough decision to make, I guess. I don't know whether you have one or not, but that is my feelings. It's been studied and studied. We have the moratorium. If it has to remain in effect, you've got a task force appointed by some quite qualified people. So, that's just my comments. Thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Mayor, members of the council. For your record, my name is Russell Schrop. I'm an attorney with the Henderson Franklin Firm, here today representing Benita Grand Properties, which is the owner of the Benita Grand Mine. As you're well aware by now, we have submitted a letter and a request directed to the mayor but...
Where?
(laugh) But copied all council members, asking consideration for an exception to the proposed moratorium should you choose to adopt it. There were several reasons for making this request, the first of which is really the historical background that exists between the city and the mine owner regarding this property. This mine was originally approved by Lee County in the 1980s and functioned as a mine since that time. It was not part of the city when the city incorporated. Rather, it was annexed into the city in 2003. And as part of that annexation, there was an annexation agreement between the city and the mine owner at that time, which runs with the land. And it contemplated the eventual transition of the mine from mining to residential. In fact, the annexation agreement actually provided that the city would initiate a comprehensive plan amendment if studies of the DRGR area determined that the property could be removed from the DRGR classification. After studies of the DRGR were completed and conducted by the city shortly after annexation, the city did not proceed forward with the comp plan amendment. So in 2006, the landowner of the mine did submit a comp plan amendment to fulfill the intent of the agreement, the annexation agreement. That plan amendment request was never processed by the city, but instead, the city commenced with another study commissioned and authorized to the DeLeese Fitzgerald Farm at that time. That study was favorable towards a reclassification of the property and amendment from the DRGR property, but again, the city did not proceed forward with the plan amendment of the property at that time. After the DeLeese Fitzgerald report came out, quite frankly, the economy took hold and started deteriorating, and this mine was a casualty of the recession. It fell into foreclosure, and the Dutch bank ultimately foreclosed on the property. That was completed in 2010, and the Dutch bank now owns the property. After considering its options for this new asset, the bank concluded that the most favorable position for the property would be to fulfill the original intent of the annexation agreement and move forward with the request to actually amend the property out of the DRGR. About 18 months ago, we commenced discussions with staff, individually with council members that would meet with us, with homeowners associations, and with environmental groups to begin the comp plan process. Staff directed us essentially to prepare and submit a proposed development agreement first. Before we submitted the comp plan amendment, the development agreement would essentially set the basic parameters and obligations of the developer as part of the comprehensive plan amendment. We prepared and submitted a draft development agreement to staff in November of last year, and as a result of that, staff reviewed it. But at that point, you decided to move forward with another study, which actually, with an RFP, which actually turned out to be the Baraco Study. Out of respect and out of deference to the city's efforts at that point, we delayed filing our comprehensive plan amendment and allowed the study to proceed. Finally, when the Baraco Study was coming to its conclusion, we proceeded to file a comp plan amendment in July of this year. So as the mine, we received one sufficiency letter from the city staff, and we have responded to the questions that were asked. So as the project stands now, as the mine stands now, as you consider this moratorium, we have a completed application pending before the city for a comprehensive plan amendment, and we've been in the process for approximately 18 months, in good faith, pursuing a plan amendment for the property. And now we face the prospect of at least another year's delay. I would respectfully suggest that applying the moratorium, if you do adopt the moratorium, applying the moratorium to this property would be unfair and inequitable under these historical circumstances. And I would further suggest that applying the moratorium to the mine property would be, at the very least, contrary to the spirit of the annexation agreement that was entered into years ago when the property was annexed into the city of Benita. For these reasons, I'd respectfully request an exception to the moratorium so that we can conduct a test pilot or pilot comprehensive plan amendment as part of your next effort to determine what should be done in the DRGR area. Mr. George Jonas, who is the chief restructuring officer for the bank, would also like to address you on this matter as well, and he will come up after me.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
My name is George Jonas. I am the chief restructuring officer for the North American Assets for S&amp;S Bank, which is the owner of Benita Grand Aggregates, also known as the mine. While I certainly understand the complexities you're facing and all these issues surrounding the DRGR, we are extremely disappointed at how this has progressed. As Russell said, we began the process of amending the comprehensive plan over a year ago when we started our discussions with staff, but the city said it wanted a more holistic approach, and the outcome of that was the Baraco Study. Out of respect to the city, we followed the guidance of staff and waited almost a year for the study to come out. And when it did come out recommending an increase in the density of the DRGR as well as other changes, it seems to me that the study was virtually set aside, as well as the recommendations of staff. You know, to my knowledge, most of the studies that have been done have also suggested a greater density in the DRGR area. And I have to confess that it's perplexing to me that all these studies that have been done to date through all these years don't seem credible or usable to you in order to make decisions concerning the DRGR. The mine is unlike any other property in the DRGR. It's been highly impacted, as you might imagine, 20 years of mining would do to a property. Those areas that are worthy of preservation have been preserved. Needless to say, the mine is not a pristine property. I, for one, firmly believe that the best use for the property, for the city, and for the bank, is to have the property developed as an upscale residential community, which will restore the beauty of the area, will add to the tax base, and will utilize state-of-the-art water management practices. But if you want this to continue to operate as a mine, then applying this moratorium certainly sends a very clear message to the bank. I mean, one way or the other, the bank needs some direction and some clarity so we can make the appropriate decisions. You know, the bank at this point really needs to decide whether it continues to pursue a comprehensive plan amendment or whether it should invest in the longer-term operations of the bank, I mean, sorry, longer-term operations of the mine, because it can invest in both. We have been patient. We've been cooperative in every way since the annexation agreement, and we want to continue to be cooperative. But applying this moratorium to the mine is just simply not right. As you saw in our letter to the mayor, we have proposed that the exemption for the mine be created to conduct this pilot program that uses a real-world project to develop the specifics concerning the critical planning features and standards that could be used across the whole DRGR. The objectives of this pilot program are really fourfold. Number one is to find the common ground on what the various stakeholder groups can move forward on relative to the DRGR. What is our common ground? Secondly, to provide an explanation to you on where the differences on the material issues lie. Thirdly, to provide you, to provide the city council with whatever information, studies, or data you need so you can make a decision regarding the DRGR. And four, finally, is to develop a template that can be applied across all the DRGR lands. We would work together with the citizens groups, with the environmental organizations, with the Water Task Force, and the other stakeholder groups to accomplish these objectives through this comprehensive plan amendment process. We would provide whatever reports, whatever studies, whatever data we have that would be useful, as well as consider providing a reasonable amount of assistance for funding additional studies if we find, if the groups find that there's information that's lacking. The choice of any other consultants would be done with input of these groups to ensure that there is impartiality of any consultants that would be selected, any future consultants that might be selected. And at the end of the day, the council still has the full authority to adopt, to modify, or reject all or some of the amendment requests that we'd be processing. That's really it. I thank you very much for allowing me to speak our truths here and certainly hope you'll give this exemption serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, you got the mine folks all at once. I'm Dave DePue. For those of you that don't know me, I am president of Morris DePue Associates and have been a resident of Lee County since 1980. I'm a former director of community development for the county, and I have observed and participated in a variety of DRGR analyses over the years and have been retained to work with the folks at the mine for almost as long as Mr. Schrop. Happily, I can say he's been there longer than I. The city has a wealth of data on its DRGR area and on the broader DRGR area that is outside the city in the county. It has data that ranges from geology and hydrogeology, drainage, to socioeconomic-type data from projected population growth, infrastructure demand, things like that. The issues associated with the DRGR have been clearly identified through the many studies that the city has participated in over the years and other more independent studies that have been done by other agencies. What you're lacking is the specific application of this data that has been compiled from the years of study and monitoring. I think working cooperatively with the city in the fashion described by Mr. Schrop and Mr. Jonas can be a blueprint for some of the future efforts that can be ultimately developed to address the DRGR. I believe that such an effort would be beneficial for the city as a whole, as well as for the area residents in particular, again, without jeopardizing the council's ability to approve, approve with conditions, or deny any requested amendment. This is not a rezoning. You are not granting entitlements. What you are doing is considering, from a legislative perspective, as outlined by your attorney previously to you, a request for amendment to the comprehensive plan. It is not involved in some sort of quasi-judicial hearing that would appear before you. Let me tell you, though, that the mine is currently in approved use on this particular piece of property. And unlike one of the prior speakers, I will tell you that the reclamation plans that have been approved do indeed establish preservation areas and reclamation efforts for the excavation itself. What the reclamation plans and what the permitting efforts do not establish is dealing with upland restoration, area-wide drainage plans, the larger transportation network, or any area-wide infrastructure demands. None of that is addressed in any of the reclamation plans and will not be addressed in the reclamation plans. That is the sort of types of issues, those issues are the types of issues that you can address as part of a comprehensive plan amendment, and that ultimately would appear before you in more detailed entitlements when those things come around. The Baraco Study and its predecessors identified a series of opportunities to address all of these issues, and I would submit to you that the Benita Grand Mine represents a key piece of that DRGR puzzle, which can help then create a template for responsible and sustainable efforts in addressing these issues that are identified throughout these studies. If this opportunity is lost, there's no guarantee that you'll get another chance to undertake this effort with such a willing partner, and I would urge the council not to let this opportunity slip away. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Okay, seeing none? Okay, council. Now, before you, and then I'll remind everyone, this is in reference to the proposed moratorium on the ordinance, and this is being the first reading, the motion at some point in time may be to either send to a second reading or whatnot. Audrey, have you anything to add before we start picking away some of these pieces here? I'm going to go ahead and kind of do it piecemeal.
Not that much. I think it's really council's will. I do want to point out that the moratorium and the balancing was the language that Lee County did when they did the moratorium that was provided to us from Donna Stone at the last hearing. So, I mean, I can make the changes to consideration if you want me to make changes, I can wait till the second public hearing if it goes to a here, you know, if council continues forward, I can do that also.
Okay.
I also found it interesting as to a point raised that, as far as fundamentally unfair to allow the one application in the pipeline, generally when there is applications in the pipeline, so as to avoid risk, you know, risk minimization, yes, legally, you can go forward, and yes, legally, we have defended it, that does cost money, you can do that if you want, or you can make an application if you think that makes more common sense. But I'll leave that, again, that's council's call. And as you recall, I wrote a memo explaining my position on the moratorium in the first place.
Okay. Counsel, if you, if you'd allow me, I just want to take a couple of these, piece at a time, some of the, the smaller issues. If we do go forward the referendum, there's been a mention of inserting the ability to end the date kind of unilaterally, or would council prefer to do that by ordinance as was suggested? How would you like to do that?
Mayor?
Yes?
Okay. In our city charter, we've discussed this before, we have granted that land use decisions, both for special exception and variances, can be done by resolution. But I still hold that, we're talking about a moratorium on a land use decision, should be done by ordinance, because, you know, it does say land use.
Well, let's say exactly what it says in the charter. Well, if you're going to call the charter, let's go to the charter provision. Because if you're writing a land development regulation, that needs to be by ordinance, if you're doing a rezoning, that needs to be done by ordinance. The term is regulate land use and development.
Yes, ma'am.
So a moratorium is a hold on regulation of, of any...
Let's just, let's just leave it at this, we can do it either way that we want to.
Yes.
Okay? So I'm just asking, counsel, which way do you want to do it? You want to do it by resolution, or do you want to go through an ordinance process? When we're, let's say that we get finished with whatever that we're going to do there, do you want to do it by ordinance, or you want to do it by resolution? Which would you like?
I'd say ordinance.
Ordinance.
Okay? All right? Let's go ahead and just set that aside then, all right? All right, now, so far as the word, having the word balance, or balance the interests of development, what, what would you like to do? Are you okay with that language? My own opinion on it, I've never been afraid of the word balance, believe it or not, and so far as, I agree with Tori, there is development out there. Someone builds a fence, it's development. Someone puts cows on a pasture, it's development. Someone builds a house, it's development. Balancing development interest may be that you decide that the balance of development interest is one unit per 10 acres, that's the appropriate balance. I, I don't think there's anything wrong with that language. However, counsel, what would you like to do?
Well, mayor, since, you know, I recommended the citizens' task force idea, basically, it's to get the sta, we're having this moratorium to get the standards in place so that at a later date, council can decide, do they want more development, or not development, or, but we haven't decided that yet. So I like the recommendation that several people made about the purpose of the moratorium is to provide a reasonable amount of time for the citizens' water strategy task force to achieve its objectives, and I added, as outlined in section 4A, because it's in there, it's already there. We get the standards in place, and, you know, then y'all do whatever, but the standards need to be in place, and I think that's the purpose of this moratorium. That's what I think.
Your suggestion is to put in there that, of course, referring to the, the task of the...
The purpose, yeah.
Yeah. Purpose being the task of that.
And I tried to send it to Audrey, but before, like, 5:00, but something happened to our server here, and I, I have something else I wanted to get to.
Jose happened to it? No, I'm just kidding.
Hey, he's doing, he's in there fixing it.
I know, I know. Counsel, what's your pleasure? What would you, what would you like to do? Would you like to leave the, the language as is now, or would you like to reference, so far as the purpose of the moratorium, to be aligned with the, with the, the water committee? That's a yes on the water committee?
Yep.
So, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, understated, I can't change the title block.
No, ma'am.
It's been advertised, otherwise we'd have to go for another extra hearings to re-advertise.
All right. All right. But coming up on the, the next reading there, okay. Okay, and I'm just, I'm just coming, coming through here, I'm not making any presumption of anything here. So we went with the purpose task force. Now, let's get down to the, the actual pilot program. Counsel, on the pilot program, there's been a suggestion by the applicant, and by the way, everybody, the, the way this was laid out was that any time that we proposed anything, if we proposed that we were going to put a moratorium on fences, or we were going to put a moratorium on, I don't know, what was it, the, the trucks that drive around and serve food, or whatever it is, someone can come in and say, wait, before you do that, consider us. That, that's all that happened in this case, okay? That's, that's all it was. Someone was saying like, wait, before you do that, so I don't want anybody to jump to conclusion that this was some kind of nefarious act on the council's part. Staff did exactly what they were supposed to do, it was a decision for council to make. The staff couldn't unilaterally just say, no, we're just going to pitch that out because we're busy, or because we don't think it should, no. That was a, that was a decision for council to make, therefore, it wasn't attached to the body of anything, it was just put right in there and say, look, you're going to, you're going to take a look at this. So with that in mind, counsel, do you see any merit in doing a pilot program or exempting the, the person that was up here, and the developer, from that, or what, what's your desires?
Well, I believe that we should, if you may, ma'am?
Yeah.
You know, I appreciate them being cooperative with the city, and holding on, and holding out, and all that kind of stuff, and, and offering to help, but, you know, we already went through this about the citizens, and what are we, how are we going to establish this task force, and we've got a year, and let's get it done. I, I just agree to stay with the task force, not make an exemption with the pilot program and all that kind of stuff. Keep it whole, get it done, got a year. And I would also say that in the annexation agreement, the way I read it, that under section 3.5, that, thank you, Mr. Schrop, for providing that, because I didn't know where else I was going to find it, I guess I could, no. Was that in 3.5, let me just pull it up, it's right in front of me, I know it. Thank you. Okay. It says in the event that the amendment of the Benita Land Classification for the property as specified is not accomplished by the city within 18 months, let's remember, 18 months, from the effective date of the annexation, the city agrees, you can de-annex, I'm not going to read all the language, the property back into Lee County, unless the parties mutually extend the time period for accomplishing the plan amendment. That was in 2003, February of 2003, that this was agreed to, right? That's what Mr. Schrop said. And has the city entered an extension agreement for this annexation agreement after 18 months?
We never modified the annexation agreement, but we have had communications with the applicant, most notably the green sheet from, I believe it was December of 2012.
Okay.
When we talked about this issue to city council, when we approached the fact that we had a development agreement and some comprehensive plan, and whether or not we could have additional time.
Well, 18 months would have been 2005 and a half, or, you know, or four and a half or something.
There was other times pointed out by Mr. Schrop where there was discussions between the parties.
That would have been before 2006. So, you know, as far as like legally, you know, I, I want to just get the water done properly, then I'll be, I'm going to be out of here in February, y'all are going to decide what you're going to do without me, but I really see that we need to take a whole picture, holistic look at the water. It's really important. We haven't done it, our comp plan says we should do it in section 1.7.1, and it gives lots of latitude about what we do, specifically to this DRGR. We've done all the studies about what development can do, but we haven't looked about what specifically we need to do with the water.
So you're not in favor of exempting the, the proposal?
That would be, thank you, mayor, thank you for summing that up for me.
Yes, Steve?
Just a question for the city attorney. In terms of a timeline, if they, if the mine has, is in our pipeline now for a development agreement of some sort, in, in normal circumstances, what would the timing be before it really came to council for a change, and, and a, let's see, a comp plan change and so on? How long would that take?
Well, I've only had a few experiences with this, but it takes several months at minimum. First of all, a development agreement, once a development agreement is negotiated, at this point, I need direction from you tonight, whether I'm even allowed to review it or, you know, process it, the development agreement application. That takes public hearings that are advertised, similar to an advertisement issue here, that would take at least two months before that could be accomplished and completed. That was assuming everything was great, and I can assure you, it would, similar to the ones we did with the racetrack, along with the other ones out in sections 1 and 2, I think six months, six to eight months is more likely.
Would you say maybe even a year? By the time we got to a comp plan change?
Yes, it would, I would say that if, if staff was reviewing it, it would take probably a year. It took the YMCA, which was a city-initiated comprehensive plan pursuant to the Sierra Club settlement agreement with the YMCA, I believe, I cannot look at Mr. Dolmer, but I'm going to say that took, taking it for the city to process it on the city itself, took probably six months or longer, as well as the FELTS overlay one. How long did that take? Two or three years?
Well, my, my, I guess my point to you, or point to council is, we have a de facto moratorium anyway. I mean, we have so many layers of government involved in developing and changing zoning that we get to the point where we're simply saying, you're going to end up in about the same place anyway. I'm, that's, those are my words, not yours.
If you allow us to process it, it would still take probably close to the year. So, I mean, you could wiggle, if you wanted to do any wiggle language to the moratorium, it could be something where...
I'm not advocating anything.
No, I'm just saying, it could be something where you authorize staff to allow the processing of what's been in the pipeline, but while the staff has been able to do the processing of it, the, the actual hearings for the comprehensive plan, the LPA hearings, as well as council hearings, as well as routing it to the state of Florida, that none of that can occur until after the moratorium's complete.
Okay. So, I guess the point I'm hoping that we're making together here is that it's, it's going to take a long time, period, to getting a comp plan change, so a moratorium or an addition to this is probably irrelevant, because it's going to end up, when you get a little farther along, I'll tell you what I really think about this moratorium, but at the point right now, we're, we're arguing about sort of a fact that doesn't make a lot of difference. It's, it's going to be the end of the moratorium period before they could get to the point of running this through the system anyway. Is that about right?
Yes, but it will be longer if you don't allow staff to process.
I understand.
Well, let's do this, let's narrow this down a little bit, instead of, let's talk about the idea of, of the pilot program, or whatever it is like that. I, I think that, that I would think that there's probably a consensus that you would all like to see this water committee go ahead and continue on.
Right, yes.
And do what it's doing, like we have planned for it to do. And, and so far as, I guess you, you get down to either exempting this, this property owner out, and/or doing the moratorium, including everyone and everybody out there, and/or going ahead and not doing a moratorium, and then everybody applies however they want to. I, I would just point out, too, this, when you talk about developers' agreement, I don't want people to get confused with what a developers' agreement did. Anytime you do a comprehensive plan amendment, or, or almost anything like that, there's a developers' agreement attached to it, which kind of outlines the parameters of what you're going to do, what's going to be required, that type of thing. Isn't that, that's a document...
Only on really, really, really big projects.
Exactly. That's, that's, those are the, that's what that is. It isn't, it isn't, it isn't a development order.
No.
It has nothing to do with zoning, it has nothing to do with that. It's like, you're going to provide X amount of dollars for your roads, you're going to do this, you promise you're going to do that. It kind of lays out the parameters of the deal. So I, not that I'm for or against it, I'm just wanting...
I still have the floor, correct? I mean, not taking away from you, but...
Well, I beg your pardon.
No, no, I'm just, no, no.
I just wanted to...
I know Martha has something to say, and I wanted to make sure I got...
Go for it.
Well, you'll get it. And go ahead.
Well, I, I come back to the, the point again, if, if, if we're really just talking about the same amount of time, why would we create a different ordinance, or create a different wording in here? Because from a legal point of view, if the moratorium passes, aren't they going to be able to continue with their agreement anyway?
Only if I get direction from you guys.
Unless we say no?
Yes. I, I would feel, because it is so inherently tied to the, a development agreement is inherently tied to the comprehensive plan.
Right.
I would not want to work on processing it, or having staff work on processing it, and I received the revisions to it on November 15th of this year, I would not want to be working on it until such time council gave me authorization to do so. I've dealt with council once where we had that issue, I think I learned, so, I'm hoping I learned. So I would want clear direction if I was allowed to process it or not, or if staff could process. But we would have a lot of issues, and I would say the one that we did with sections 1 and 2, that development agreement took at least six months, because we had to make sure DCA was happy with, at that time, Department of Community Affairs, now Department of Economic Opportunity with the state of Florida. There's more players than just the city and the applicant.
Well, the, the mine, the applicant brought forward the suggestion of a pilot. Does that put them in a position of this council saying, stop altogether? Or does another, does another ordinance have to be written? Does another decision have to be made by this council to keep you, to keep them from processing their agreement?
I need direction from council.
I want to know legally what would happen. If this council says the moratorium is in effect, what happens to that development agreement, and what happens to their moving down the, the standard pipeline of, of, of comp plan change?
I would take it to city council and say, city council, your recommendation based on what you have done is that you're not interested at this time, if that's what city council tells me to do. I need city council direction.
So you would not continue their, their, their development agreement if this, if the moratorium passes?
As written.
Yes, until, unless council directed me otherwise.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Yes?
Okay. Here's maybe what is missing in that picture about year of review, okay? Looking at the developers' agreement, coming to a, a comp plan, is that, under what standards do they make the review? And that's what we're trying to get here, is some standards for our water quality and water quantity, septic tank, what do we have, a septic tank replacement program maybe? What, there, well field ordinance needs to be updated, there's so many things, there, there are projects that need to be done, there's lobbying that needs to be done, there's, you know, South Florida Water Management maybe needs to help us with drilling those Spring Creek, you know, culverts under I-75, you've got to lobby FDOT. There's so many things that, that have not been addressed or put into motion, that to do review the others were projects, but the standards, like low-impact development, what do we mean by that? Do we want to have that as a standard? So, doing the review might even in the year be a waste of time, because that could all change in a year, depending on the recommendations of the, the water task force.
Okay, and so what you're saying is that, again, the...
Again, the standards, the standards need to be there.
Yes, you, you prefer not for them to proceed on because you believe there's... Yes. You, you prefer not for them to proceed on, because you believe there should be a set of standards prior to that happening?
Thank you, mayor.
Instead of them developing the standards as they go, right?
Well, what I'm saying, yes, standards as we go, but if you grant them the legal, the little hurdle for a comp plan amendment, that also, now, that's giving them rights. Then you can't take them back if you just find out from the water task force that, you know what, this doesn't work. We haven't decided yet. Let the decision come after that information from these good residents and the ones that have been appointed. Determine, you know, what is the right course forward. There's so, I mean, I've learned so much in this process about what we don't have.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, there isn't further intertwining of this. I think we can boil this down to two basic decisions we need to make here. Is one, are, are we going to do the moratorium? Are we gonna go through with that? And I guess before we do that, we would like to know, I would like to know, if, if you're going to do that, are you going to exempt them out of it, or they will, will they be included in it? And so, I would, I would entertain a motion so far as that first, whether or not you're going to take them up on their offer, their plan, to exempt them out and allow them to work along parallel while the moratorium is in effect.
Well, I'll make a motion to not do that.
Okay, I got you.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, there's a motion to, to not accept their proposal, and there's a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Slacta?
I'm gonna clarify right now. By saying aye, you're agreeing that this proposal should not be accepted. I just wanna make that clear.
Yes. Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, the second part of this is whether we should have a moratorium or not. And so far as these substantive issues are, they're, I'm not gonna call them substantive issues. So far as these issues, so far as the purpose, we, we went through there, and we talked about the purpose of the task force, and I think you're gonna try to craft something that says that's along the lines of the purposes of the water.
Right. I'll make the two changes, the dissolve the moratorium only by ordinance, and section 2 changed the purpose to what was stated by Ms. Johnson.
Okay, and the end date by, or, the only way it could be ended is by the end of the year or by ordinance.
Correct.
Right, okay. I'm gonna add something here. I agree that, I think that since there's, there's no vesting available to the applicant or anybody in the DRGR, because they have to come here for that, to find out anything that they wanna do, I think a moratorium is redundant, and that, that's the only reason that, that I am against a moratorium. That, and plus, the moratorium isn't really on the applicant. The moratorium is on us. We've placed the moratorium on ourselves. And anytime that you, you hamstring yourself and you, you forbid yourself the ability to think, the ability to reason, the ability to consider, I think it's a mistake. And, and that's it. It's not personal. I just think we need to maintain that ability. But counsel, what would you like to do?
May I?
Yes.
Since, since this moratorium, when, the first discussion's moratorium, I'm trying, trying to figure out what the moratorium really is. And it's, it can't be about conservation. It can't be, because the three people who voted against it, Mayor Nelson, Janet Martin, Councilwoman Martin, and myself, we stood shoulder to shoulder with conservationists on issues. It can't be about conservation. It's gotta be about something else. If it's about no growth, somebody speak up, cuz that's, that's what it really gets down to. Or if it's about the, a fear of this council making the wrong decision, that's okay too. But I can tell you, what this really comes down to, this moratorium comes down to is two things. Number one, more government. It's another layer of restrictions on our citizens to do things that we have, we have the responsibility to make a decision to do. Secondly, it's a failure on the part of this council to make a decision. We have, we have now asked seven citizens who are not elected to put themselves out in front of the rest of this body of citizenry, to be getting phone calls and emails about whether they should or should not approve development of DRGR, how it should be done. And, and that's our job. You know, we didn't do the job. All the moratorium does is push it down the road another year. And yeah, I, I support the task force, because I think we're gonna get a decision that this, finally, this council will make a decision, go on. Now, I've said it before, I'll say it again. I read the studies. I know what's in them. You know, I'll make a decision right now if you want to, but if we're gonna wait a year to do it, I'll wait a year to do it. And I'll support the seven people. But we should've been making that decision, not the citizens that we just asked to do that for us.
Okay, yes. Anyone else? Martha?
I would also wanna strike 4C, paragraph 4C.
Wait a second.
And while you're looking at that, moratorium.
Oh, slow down a second.
Yeah.
4C.
4C, 4C. Because again, we haven't decided, this council hasn't decided whether they want comp plan amendments or whatever, and when this task, this is why we have a moratorium, we're delaying, yes, that's correct, that's correct, Steve. Councilman McIntosh, we are not making a decision. We are delaying that decision while we get standards in place, and then we can come to that decision when the time, the standards are in place. Otherwise, as I said, no standards in place, you're granting a, certain rights, and we will have no legal backup to say, "Oh, you know what? The task force said like last week, but we gave you rights like last year." We won't be able to hold them to it. So, anyhow, 4C.
So, your, your request then from counsel?
To strike 4C, cuz it's not pertinent, because we haven't made any decisions about making comp plan amendments.
Okay, so 4C, for everyone, everyone out there, if the 4C states, "If applicable, based on the results of the citizens' water strategy," I started to say strategery.
That's good.
I did.
You read real good.
Strategy, yeah, just strategy task force, "Begin to develop comprehensive plan amendments and land development regulations to implement any comprehensive plan amendments so that the area can be adequately developed, or adequately and properly developed balancing the interest of development," and the other language that people didn't like. Any other comments on striking 4C? What's your, what's your pleasure, counsel? Would you like to strike 4C or leave it in?
Out.
Out?
Out.
Out, out, okay, out it is. Okay, it's, what else?
Sir? I think you've got it. Thank you. I would make a, if we wanna make a motion, unless we have more discussion.
Yeah.
Oh, you had something else? I beg your pardon.
Sure, sure, sir.
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. That's okay. I just wanna thank Steve for his comments. I don't support the moratorium. I didn't when we talked about it at first, and I just said, a couple of people, and I'm, and I'm happy to say only a couple of people asked me why. I expected to get, you know, boomeranged about this, and I really didn't. And the couple of people that I did get to speak to, they said, "Boy, I certainly understand more than I ever did before with having an opportunity to talk to you," and they said, "I wish you had talked more about it at, at the city council as to why you did decide that." And I need to say it, that I don't support it, because it is another layer of government, and we hear that all the time, that you people are regulating this, 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 and this, and stay out of it, and let us do what we need to do that's right. And I said, "I agree with that. The DRGR designation has been a determinant to development all on its own. We didn't need to have to change it and muck it up, do anything to it, cuz it's worked for years to keep development from not from happening." So, basically, that is the moratorium that's been in place all along. So, I don't agree with it. I can't vote for it. I do support the creation of our task force. I do support them working on the objectives we've set forward for them, and I do hope that the mine folks will, and their representatives will continue to participate in that as we go further with that. They, they, I hope they're at the table for that, cuz I do see ultimately that mine could be and would be an absolute gem added to the city. It, it will be residential one day. I, I can't think of a better use for it than that. There is beautiful conservation land. I've been out to the mine. I was invited to go see it, and the conservation property that they've talked about, that they will continue to save as conservation, is absolutely the pristine property we've talked about. And I hope that that's, gets to stay that way. So, I can't support it, I'm sorry. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else this time, before we, we have a motion in a second, right?
Well, I was gonna make, I was gonna make a motion.
You did, you did.
I thought you did.
Okay. Well, no, I did not. I said I was going to, and then Janet would like to speak.
Oh, that motion. We already had that on the floor. That's for the opt-out. We already voted on that.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Diane?
Second motion that you'll make.
All right.
Thank you, Debbie.
Okay.
First motion, mayor, was to...
So, Bill?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to...
I'll second the motion.
Motion to support the moratorium. I'm guessing, right?
I had a whole speech about the word moratorious. I took seven years of Latin.
Would you like to make a second and then make your speech?
I took seven years of Latin, so I could use the word moratorious. Anyhow, okay. I'm seconding his motion, mayor.
There you go.
Thank you.
That wasn't so hard. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Audrey?
Just a point of clarification, more for people than for council. This is, the motion is just to hold the first reading and move it to a second reading in public hearing with the changes that we approved. So, we'll come back to you at December 18th.
That is my understanding. Is that your understanding, Bill?
Yes.
That's my understanding.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions? Roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
No.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh? Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And before we go on, why don't we go ahead, I bet you a lot of you wanna go ahead and, and maybe you might wanna go. I'm just guessing. So, we'll go ahead and take a 10-minute break, okay?
Yay!
We'll come back here, oh, let's make it nine minutes, just make it difficult.
Thank you.
7:20, please.
Nine minutes, Martha.
Nine minutes, huh? Nine good minutes.
You're flying to San Francisco tomorrow.
Would you like a minute?
I haven't been there in years.
Yeah, I would. I left mine in the car.
Yes, sir. Okay, bud.
It was down around 5:00.
It was down.
Well, I flew out here 9:09.
Look at that. So, does this mean we are, we are running?
Then we went, we got to San Francisco.
Yeah, okay. No file attached to that one, okay.